Okay, we are now streaming. All right, so we're ready. Councilman Brannigan, you're clear to start.
Okay. I'd follow the council meeting to order. Does anyone have any special intentions today? Seeing none, Councilwoman McKenney, would you lead us in prayer? Kristy, you need to unmute.
She's trying to, Councilman.
Okay.
Yes, one moment, please. Stand by. Yes. Dear Lord, please guide us in doing the best for the citizens, Lord. Also, guide us and make us do the best for the, for what's, for the city, for all citizens in, in making the best choices for today. Amen.
Amen. I'll leave this in a pledge. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a quorum. And is there any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor this morning? Seeing none, under the consent agenda, we have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of June 4th, 2020. Item two is approval of alcohol beverage permit applications. We have none. Item three, approval of bingo and public gathering applications. We have none. Item four is correspondence reports from the mayor, C O, or department heads. Item four A, at the request of the administration, a report from Mayor Zahn.
Mayor Zahn.
Thank you, Council Chairman. Um, few quick things, and then we're going to go to a remote viewing that's going on, videotaping that's going on right now. But let me talk real quick about our sales tax. The sales tax for the month of April that we received last month are down 30.2%. I want to, not happy with that, but I do want to thank Mike Wetzel, because our CFO, because he actually projected around 30% down for that month, which has given us our issues that we have with our budget. So because of the good projections that we have received from a CFO, we knew how to budget for this upcoming year dealing with COVID. We were reporting a lot of good things in the past with sales tax always seeming to be on the rise most of those months. But of course, COVID has affected that. So as we work through this, it'll be a tough year ahead of us. But this fall, hopefully, we'll be seeing some type of a rise in our sales tax, and we'll be able to make some budget amendments throughout the year. I want to talk about returning to the work and also returning to council meetings that are not Zoom. Returning to work, look, all the departments have remained operational. I've said that numerous Zoom council meetings that we've had. We continue to remain operational. We did have to put our field crews under quarantine for two weeks. I'm happy to report half of those crews are back. And when I say half, half of those crews are back because we don't want to put all the crews together during what we still see still happening. And as we know, if anyone watched the governor's report yesterday, the governor's not happy. He seems a little, I'll just say cautious, not concerned, but a little cautious on what's happening since the last two weeks. So that's something we have to take into account. Our tech upgrades that we would do with I T and also our auditor for safety for our employees and also safety for our people going in for the services that they will be able to start going into again soon, which we do have some open right now, will remain and will get even better. So I want to thank those groups, those departments for helping that. We've had total help from the top to the bottom. I want to thank the council again for supporting what we've done. We continue to keep our services going. We have continued these Zoom meetings. I know some people not happy that we are having Zoom meetings. But let me, let me explain to you why we're not in the council chambers. First of all, the administration controls the buildings. I have not done that without speaking and including the council. I have included with the council president, George Brannigan, every discussion about returning to the council chambers. The council chambers presents a problem for returning under the current guidelines. And we don't know what the governor's going to say on Monday. But myself and the council have spoken, myself and the council president have spoken as of yesterday about returning to the council chambers. The issue that I have with returning to the council chambers, and look, the council can hold a council meeting live. And George, you know this, I told you this on day one when COVID started. You could do Zoom, you could do outside, we could do the Pantry Center, we could do anything, something where we have more room. The challenge is with the council chambers is, and continues to be right now, it might be after Monday, is that I, the mayor, have to limit the public. I have to limit the public who comes in. When you did, when you figure the seats are there and the people on the council, the chief, myself, and also directors, council clerk, my administration attend the council meeting. We space everybody apart, we put the plexiglass up. We re, we reconfigure the council chambers for the council, for the council clerk backing everybody up at least a row. And I know you don't have rows, but just start imagine breaking everybody down. It puts us back and it also limits to about maybe 16 public, 16 members of the public going into the council chambers. Not to mention that issue, because I don't, even though we are allowed to do it and other entities may be doing it. And like I said last time, I don't, I'm not knocking them, but I don't want to be, I don't like the thought of doing it. We also have a problem with K T V. Maybe other entities don't film their council meetings, maybe they don't have a K T V. I don't know. All I know is that our booth for K T V is made for three people, but it's tight for three people. You cannot practice social distancing under the current guidelines in the K T B, K T V room. You have to have at least two people filming. I'd like to have three, but you have to have at least two people filming and streaming. Usually it is three. Those present other problems, which I'm sure some individuals have had problems with if we weren't able to tape a council meeting. With that said, I think that we have to look if everything keeps moving in a good direction, which I've discussed with the council as of this week and also the council president yesterday. The council president has some ideas, I think the council has some ideas of, of going maybe remote someplace else. I will say on this, on the record, my administration will be wherever we need to be, whether it's on Zoom again, whether it's on a remote location. And general services will handle the setup for the council. You tell us where to be, we'll be there. I do think the council chambers is an option after 4th of July, but I will stress it is an option. So being an option doesn't make it a reality. And I want to thank George Brannigan and the members of the council for supporting that and understanding that we will continue to keep our people safe, our workers, and also we're not excited about limiting, limiting the amount of the public that can come in. If you look at other entities that they're doing and, and Lee Russell, my deputy CEO, reached out to other entities within Jefferson Parish. And if I remember correctly, other cities, other municipalities, or maybe, maybe they're in their council chambers, but they're zooming for their council chambers, at least the last few council meetings they have been doing that. And they have not released their future plans. I happened to see yesterday, last night on the news, it looks like, unless they're just using computers, it looks like the city of New Orleans is still zooming. Maybe some of them in the council chambers, but some of them look like they're in their offices or at home zooming or their other business zooming. So when people say that Kenner may be the only group out there not returning to a physical location, that's false. Again, that's fake news. It's not true. We're not the only one. Other municipalities within Jefferson Parish are doing it. Other municipalities, not Jefferson Parish, other municipalities within the parish. And it looks like our other biggest city next to us, the city of New Orleans, appears to be doing the same thing. So again, I appreciate the support and, and bear with us as we try to, as we first keep our employees and our residents safe instead of having them in any kind of detrimental situation. I want to talk about also something really good. I, I said last council meeting, you know, the IV waste is moving forward. Our, you know, you see the cans on the street, you see the recycling bins on the street. You see nothing but good news about how IV waste is getting garbage picked up throughout the city of Kenan trash. But there's also a good, another good announcement. We're going to do a soft opening today, and we're going to switch over in just a minute to the new drop off site that Sidney Torres slash IV waste has invested close to $300,000 in on Kenner property, something that we have been wanting, waiting for, for a long time. Something that's free in cost to us because it was paid for by IV waste. And also free when you go to use it. No, the days are gone that we have to worry about going to the David Drive unincorporated site to drop off and pay as a Kenner resident. Those days are history. Now you'll be able to utilize this drop off site. No cost to us as a taxpayer, no cost to the city of Kenner, and no cost when you go to use it. Before we switch over to Sydney, we made a P S A yesterday, which will run this afternoon and may be running already. I want to thank Sydney again here at the council meeting for what he's done. I want to thank the Kenner council, those that have supported the IV waste movement, because you're starting to see the things that we will be announcing and showing that IV waste has invested in our community. With that, council president, if you'd, if you'd allow us to switch over to the IV site, I know somebody's out there filming him. Might take a minute or two for him to come on. And then we come back, we'll return to the council meeting. Thank y'all. Sydney, you there?
What's that?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
There he is. Okay. Hello, council members and, and mayor. Thank you for giving me the time to show you guys a little bit of how the drop site works. And today, as you pull in, you'll see we welcome the residents. You must have a Kenner address on your driver's license or on your, on your water bill. And these are the rules here that you can see, that you can read when you come in. No commercial debris, it's only for Kenner residents. Very, very similar to David Drive and what they're doing in Jefferson Parish and St. Bernard Parish. Now Kenner has its own drop site. And this is how it works. So you'll pull in, this is our first customer here. And Mr. Curtis is the, the attendant who will check the driver's license and water bill. But come on, let's, let me show you how it works. What's nice about this is you can drive up on a ramp. You're allowed to dump into a dump without hurting your back or, you know, it makes it easy to dispose of the debris. A lot of people doing yard cleanup, cleaning out their garage. It's going to stop a lot of that litter that goes and blows down the street because people have nowhere to bring it. So it's going to be really nice to walk up here and drive up. Throw your stuff in the, in the dumps. So does anybody have any questions?
No, I just want to say thank you for doing this. That's awesome, because we have had a lot of complaints about going to David Drive and having to pay $20. So this is a good thing for the residents of Kenner. Thank you, Sydney.
You're very welcome, council member.
Um, yes, I just have one question. Hi, Sydney. What are the hours of, of operation?
So right now, we're doing from nine to three, and we're only doing the weekends for now, because we're testing it out, seeing how much, you know, how many, what's the usage. And, and so it's going to be on the weekends from, from Friday to Sunday, nine to three.
Thank you.
Right. And I have a question, I guess, to the administration. As far as Sydney, you can, Chairman, also, as far as getting the information to our citizens, obviously, we're going to have to put up placards, put it on our, put it on our Facebook page, put it on our city pages. So for right now, hopefully, when the P S A runs, our stuff, that is, that is important for people to know what the logistics, where it is, the hours that it is, what can you bring, what can't you bring? So Sydney, can you go in a little bit about that as far as what is?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, council member. So what, what we're doing, we, we've already put up signs on, on, on the gates, and we're going to have one on Williams and 24th Street, right behind the break tag center. And that's going to go up within the next hour. We've already put up all the other signs. We're putting it on social media, and we are going to do some advertising as well, a little bit on TV and, and as well on our social media. And I know the city of Kenner is going to put some on, on theirs as well. So that's the kind of advertising we're doing. But if you have any suggestions, council member, we're more than happy to look at any papers, newspapers, or anything else you think would be helpful.
Yeah, this, this is great. This is something, since my tenure on the council, we've always envisioned, as the president said, you know, paying that 20 bucks was something that kind of got everybody's going to appreciate, really appreciate. And, you know, as long as, as we emanate this information to tell people, because sometimes people will try to circumvent the system and reach that they should.
Correct. And that's why we have the rules on the gate. You can't bring any paints, batteries. We're checking that as they come in the door. We're training the attendant to make sure they're not bringing anything that's going to contaminate. And, and what we, what we, as a plane taking off, sorry about that. But what I can say is this, is that we are going to watch to make sure that it's only wooded waste, construction debris, cleaning out your garage, anything that you would do at your house, spring cleaning. You now have a place to bring it instead of letting it sit on, on, on your front lawn and, and, and blow down the street. So I think it's a good thing St. Bernard Parish is doing it. We have a drop site, two drop sites in St. Bernard, Jefferson Parish, I know St. Charles, St. John. So now the city of Kenner officially has its own drop site.
Thank you, sir. Good job. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Sydney?
Compliments. Sydney, this is Glenn Hayes. I want to thank you. We selected you. We talked about your can do attitude. I hope you can hear what I'm saying with the wind out there.
I can, I can. Yes, sir.
We, when we initially talked about this project, we just spoke, it was a $1 million price tag. So you doing it for what you're doing for our community, we really appreciate it. I got to tell you, guys, we're getting a lot of compliments about your work. So thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, council member. I really appreciate that.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions for Sydney?
I do, Mr. President.
All right, go ahead, Tom.
Hey, Sydney, I just wanted to ask, as far as the dumpsters that are there, how often are they going to be transported? They're not going to stay there for any long.
No, sir, Mr. Councilmember. What we're going to do is, is as soon as they are full, we will, we will bring them to be dumped and be brought back. The good news is that we're not taking garbage here. We're only taking tree debris, household, you know, cleaning out the garage, things that you would, you would normally, you know, bring to, put in a dumpster if you ordered a 30 yard dumpster from another company. So it's not going to sit here long, but we are watching what people put in it because it's very important to us to make sure that we control that nothing contaminates the loads to where we have to bring it somewhere else because of the fact that they're contaminating it. So we will dump it regularly, and we will stay on top of monitoring to make sure that nothing's brought here that will create any problem, problems from an environmental standpoint.
And how many dumpsters are utilized at one time?
So right now, we have four, as you can see here, we have one, two, and then two on this side. And what we're doing is, is that we're, we're using four right now. We can always add one on each side more. But the reason why the administration and we discussed that we would do it on the weekend, Friday through Sunday, to try to get a feel, to see how many, and then we can adjust it if we need to open during the week or not open during the week. And it also, you know, kind of get the idea of the flow and the residents, what's the habits of, do they do it on the weekends? Is it better during the week? So it's kind of a trial period here, and we'll, we'll test it out. But I'm sure that the administration will keep you guys informed.
Very good. Thank you.
And Sydney, it's fence boards, and so like if you change, a person changed their fence, and they can bring the fence boards there, that's debris that's fine to go in those dumpsters, correct?
Correct. And also, you know, with the white goods, we don't accept them. But if somebody wanted to bring them instead of putting them on the curb, we will, we want to also accept those here instead of leaving them on the streets. We're also going to encourage some of that, too. And as we go along, we're going to add some things and take away some things, but we'll keep people posted on what we accept, what we don't accept.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, council members, a year?
Thank you. Sydney, I know you've mentioned about the paints and the hazardous materials. Is there going to be some certain timelines that you could accept those as well as, like you said, the white goods?
Well, that's why we, it's a trial and error. But I'm sure, you know, like in St. Bernard Parish, and there's other areas that we service, that we do have a company that we sub out the paints to pick up and the tires. So we will be working with the administration and, and figuring out as it goes along, if this is what they want to do or not do. But right now, we're just starting out with like fence boards, tree material, you know, C and D, construction debris and, and, and tree limbs and stuff like that. But as it goes on, depending on what the demand is, we're here to serve the people of Kenner and serve you guys. And so I want to make sure that we, we, we offer whatever we can to make it easier for the citizens of Kenner.
Well, yeah, no, I thank you for that, but just for the clarity of the residents who, like you said, are cleaning out and do come across hazardous materials, that they know that at some point we can do something on a, whether it be once a quarter or whatever the timeline is to say, yeah, bring them and we'll take care of them at that point versus trying to sneak them through and, and dispose of them in the containers that are there.
Absolutely. I'm open to that. And I think let's get through the next month or two, and then we can figure out, do we do it once a quarter or, you know, once a month or whatever works?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I, I would just like to say that this is located in District Two. It's 24th and Connecticut. So if you turn right by the, the old break tag slash the old recreation building and go down, that's where you, that's where it's located at. So I want to thank Sydney again. And Councilman Carroll asked if we're going to be getting something out. That's what I'd said early on before we switched over to Sydney, that we did a P S A yesterday that may be on already. It may not, but if, if it is not on, it will be on by this afternoon.
Do we have an address, Ben?
I mean, it's, it's 24th and Connecticut. I mean, it's, it's,
It's at the end of the street.
Yeah, yeah, you'll, you'll find it. You eventually, you'll run out of street if you keep going.
That's not good.
No.
Well, thank you, Sydney.
Thank you, guys.
Mayor Zahn, do you have any other comments in the mayor's report?
I just want to say this is what makes us kind of proud. I mean, we keep moving forward with things like this. This is what we need to do.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, second by Councilmember Wilmot on the consent agenda. Oh, wait, Gregory?
Yeah, yeah, Council, but I just wanted to make a couple of comments on the first part of the mayor's presentation about the safety aspects, about the council chambers and all of that. Because I wanted, I wanted to say a few words about that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And again, I want to, I want to thank all of our participation as we meet to address the safety aspects of the city of Kenner and the mayor and administration, because it has always been the objective for the safety of not only the employees. And it is good to hear that, that the guys and the ladies are coming back and with very little circumstances with their health. That's, that's a priority. But also that transitions into, as he spoke about the use of the council chambers, is as important. And I believe our guidance in following the governor's position on ensuring the health is dictated about what we do. And as he presents us with new information, statistics, we are going to have to follow that. And I think it may be what some people feel that we are not doing this or we should be doing that. We're going to always do that, but as long as the safety aspect of it is first, I think we're going to be great. The council chamber, ideally for me, that's, that's the people's chambers. That's where we need to be. The last thing that we should do is try to force something until it is conducive to the people, to the employees. So as we go forward to be able to open it up more, we're taking our lead from the government and how the health effects of the entire city is affected. That is, that is the pace that we should be taking. And anything to try to exaggerate that may, may come back to bite us in the end. So I can appreciate that. 16 now, maybe if we move there, and then if we go farther, we'll be able to do it. And I think it gives confidence to the people to know that that's what we're doing first. And as we get better, to be able to come back to make us whole again, because that, to me, that identifies us, the chambers, the people's place to meet and to discuss city executive challenges and everything else. So I want to thank everybody for their support, the administration, the mayor, for us taking this position during this.
Okay, do we have anyone else? All right, I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, second by Councilmember Wilmot on the consent agenda. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item nine, public hearings for final passage. Item nine A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,713, an ordinance amending the revenues in the 2019, 2020 operating budget due to the revenue shortfalls and amending the 2019, 2020 operating and capital budget and prior year's capital budgets to cover the revenue shortfall.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember Brennan to open a public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mike Wetzel, we, you're here to answer any questions? Does anyone have any questions for Mike?
No, I just, I just like to tell Michael, thank him for his, you know, leadership in this to ensure that we realize we are going through a, some challenges right now, and we have to make adjustments according to what's going on. This is just one year where we are today. Next year, hopefully, I pray that things will improve, not only for our financial aspect, but for the citizens as a whole, which will bring back the businesses and all of the other entities that make the city of Kenner whole. So thanks again for your support. We all had to participate in this, each council member to participate in and, and providing some funding that will, that will help with the little hole that, well, the hole that we have in our budget. So hopefully, as things start to come back, 30% is, is, is a serious number. But I'm sure there are municipalities around the country that, that wish they would have 30% as we have right now. So we'll take this as a blessing and continue to do forward and make the right decisions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Does anyone else have any questions? Adam, do we have anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this matter?
Don't see any hands up, Councilman.
Okay, thank you, Adam. I got a motion by Councilman Brannigan, second by Councilmember Brennan to close the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember Brennan to approve. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by council members. Item 13A is a resolution amending rule 11, 12, and 13.1 of the rules of organization, business, order, and procedure of the council of the city of Kenner.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember McKenney. Do we have any discussion on this? I would like to open on this. The, the reason I'm making this change is in January, we were under the old council rules, agenda rules, where they were in place for 25 to 30 years. And the bottom line is, I feel after being under both scenarios, the new way that we put in place starting in February gave us time constraints. And the bottom line is, it, I feel that it didn't give us enough time to be able to have questions answered, to get the agenda straight on the council president line. The, my assistant also had time constraints, and we were rushed to do things. So that's why I put this change in place. When we made the change, I voted for the change. And the bottom line was, I had indicated that I would look at this at the end of my presidency. And if I felt that it wasn't satisfactory to the way, or better than the way it was, then I was going to change it back. We lose one day on a Thursday meeting by having the agenda come out two days before. And we lose two days on the Friday agenda by having it come out two days before. And I, I believe that it takes time away from the council members, or fellow council members, and it takes time away from the public to be able to review an agenda and get all their question answers. So I think it's important from a transparency standpoint to change it back to the way it was, because basically it wasn't broken. And we, we tried to fix. was, because basically it wasn't broken and, uh, we, we tried to fix it. The other reason that the change occurred was because people were complaining about supplemental agenda. And the bottom line is, the ironic thing about it is, when the people complained about the supplemental agenda, where we put issue, uh, legislation on it, it was something that didn't make the Monday agenda. And the people that complained about that were the people that spoke at the meeting saying they did not want to change the way that the agenda meetings were being held. You can't have it both ways. So my message to those people is, we're changing this thing back, and, uh, I don't want to hear any complaints about the supplemental agenda. I feel that this is a good government move, uh, to put us back and give everyone more time to be able to review the agenda and have their questions answered. Do we have any council members that would like to speak? Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Um, it's my understanding that this is, this is changing the rule back to what it was that we had previously for many, many, many years. As far as that's concerned, it does give the, the council members, and it does give the public an opportunity to view the agenda, uh, many days in advance, which is excellent. Uh, that's good government, and, and, and I think this is a good government measure from that perspective. But from what I understand, it also changes, uh, and allows us to have the supplemental agenda again. So it returns to that. Um, again, I believe that that is a power that's bestowed to the council. And to, to, to bring it back, it, 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 it gives the council members, uh, the power to bring back a supplemental. And again, I think that, to me, I think that's the way we need to go. Uh, I appreciate you bringing this, uh, legislation, Mr. President, and, and, and restoring, uh, what we had, those rules before. Uh, again, I think this is good government, and I, I look forward to returning to these measures. Hopefully, uh, my fellow colleagues will support this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilmot. Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to echo some of the comments for Councilman Wilmot, uh, first, I'd like to say, Council President, thank you for, uh, submitting this. And no one, none of us, none of the council, not the administration, not the mayor, nobody had the preview like you and your assistant, because you are the person that sets the, that sets the stage for us to have these meetings. So you have had six months to be able to, to dissect it, to look at it. Before, before we changed, I was one of the ones that did not support it, because I, that was just how I felt. Now, there was some good reason maybe to do it, but I think overall for the constituents and for people like yourself, and for people who have to facilitate the meeting, I think it was, it was a little bit, uh, constricting. So the biggest thing besides that is for you to be able to, you were a person, as you said, that voted for it. You, you, you chose now to say, I realized this, maybe we shouldn't have done it. So it took a lot of, you know, a lot of, lot of courage for, sometimes we don't like to do, we make a position to stick with it. So I'd like to commend you on that, sir, to say that I can appreciate that. And, uh, when decisions are made for the betterment of the community, even if in the beginning you were against it, I think that speaks volumes. And, you know, not only your constituents, but the council in the city should appreciate that, that it is the, this is the mandate or the, the, the thinking that you have, and it is something that we all should have. I hope that myself, if I'm put in your same position, that I'm able to do the same thing. So thanks again for your leadership, and I really appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this legislation? Councilmember Segir?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, if, if going back in history, as you mentioned, about the years that the, uh, existing, pre-existing conditions were there for the Monday cutoff date for agenda filings, and then the Wednesday, uh, cutoff date, which was referred to as supplemental. And then, uh, by definition, the only one who could add something to the supplemental was a council member. The administration's cutoff was always, uh, the Monday. And it just seems as, over the years that, uh, that went on, uh, residents would come to the meeting on, uh, our meeting nights and complain about the supplemental agenda because things that were added to the supplemental agenda were not publicized, uh, as the regular agenda cutoff on Monday was. So their complaint was things that would pop up at the meeting that they did not have the opportunity to see as being the reason that they didn't like the supplemental. Uh, so as, as my memory serves me, that after, uh, hearing those complaints, uh, I drafted a, a change, uh, of that with the city attorney to try to, uh, resolve that issue. Uh, it was frustrating to hear residents complain that things were on the supplemental agenda they had not seen, and it was the day before the council's meeting on a Wednesday cutoff, and then we had a Thursday meeting, or the Friday meeting was two days after. So the discussion was whether or not the supplemental is, is good or bad. Uh, so when drafting the, uh, the change and researching, uh, the public records law, uh, and Count, and, uh, Mr. Rapier can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think it said, as long as the agendas are published twenty-four hours in advance of the council meeting, we would be legal. So initially, uh, in the proposed legislation in January, uh, it had, uh, that language. And then, uh, but at the meeting, there was discussion and amendments to move it forty-eight hours in advance of the actual meeting date, whether we had a Thursday or a Friday date. So that was approved, uh, the amendment was approved to move it forty-eight hours in advance. But the goal was still to say that whatever went on that agenda cutoff would be what the council would entertain at the meeting, Thursday or Friday, that nothing else could be added to the agenda as a surprise. Nobody knew about it. So, uh, I think that it's been now, uh, right at about six months, a little shy of six months, that we've worked on to this change. I cannot find in any of the council meetings that we've had that anybody has complained about an agenda item that was put up that they didn't know about, because with the, the new rule, whether it's published on, uh, the Tuesday or Wednesday, everything that went on the agenda was published. So everybody had an opportunity to read and understand what was going to be on the agenda. Now, you made a comment about the time constraints. The time constraints is, is a little funny, because I, I've been a council president before, and, and I'm sure, uh, Council Wilmot, Councilman Carroll, Councilman McKenney have been there, uh, Brennan, I think you were, I'm not sure. The time constraint is, is confusing, because the only time constraint is when the agenda gets published, the council president, through his assistant or himself, when I was council president, I did it myself, reach out to the colleagues and say, who would like to motion or second on an item? That took me a whole max hour to do. So if it only takes an hour of time to prepare the council agendas from the time it's published to the time of the council meeting for the purpose of determining who's going to motion or who's going to second an item, I, I'm a little confused as to how it took Councilman Brannigan and his assistant such a time constraint issue, because it can be done that fast, clearly. Now, I do have no problem changing it back if it's clearly going to resolve the problem or not bring the problem back. So with that, I have a question, but I'd like to direct this question to Mr. Richard Brown. So Adam, is, uh, Mr. Brown on here, and could you unmute him?
He does, and he has his hand up.
Thank you.
You're unmuted, Mr. Brown. You, you can, you can turn your microphone on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Campo.
Mr. Brown, as I said, you were one of the vocal ones that complained about the supplemental agenda items that came up, and you were not aware of them. Is this not correct?
We had, had some complaints, excuse me, about the supplemental agenda. Our, our main complaints were, were matters being introduced from the floor. But, but if you recall, when I spoke to the council, when you changed this rule back in January, I, I was opposed to the change. I wanted the council to keep the old rule. It had worked well for twenty years or more, and, and I urged the council to keep it. I saw no need to change it, and I'm, I'm happy thinking the council is probably going back to that rule.
Well, that's a good point, because it was commented to me that there were five votes already when this was first brought up. So I'm sure through the walking quorum that's taken place between those five members, they know their votes already, but that still gives me the opportunity to express my point of view that this was done to cure your problem that you had been complaining about, which was the things that popped up on the supplemental agenda. Now, the last six months, I haven't heard you complain. So did it cure that problem or not?
I, I don't think it was that much of a problem to, to cure. We, I and others may continue in the future to complain about matters put on the supplemental agenda if they are matters that could have easily been put on the original agenda. If it's put on the supplemental agenda, you know, and, and there was no reason for having, for not being able to get it on the original agenda, we, we might complain about it, just, just as we would complain about something being introduced from the floor for the same reason. That mo, most cities, and I think we took this up and discussed this in January, most, most cities give at least three days notice on the agenda, and apparently quite a few in, in South Louisiana give five days, uh, uh, notice of the agenda. The agenda comes out about five days before the meeting. We, we just, I, I think it's, I think it's a good idea to go back to the way it used to be. I think it worked well, and I'm just happy to know the council is considering going back to it.
Well, again, uh, you're saying then that if we go back to it, you're going to still complain about supplemental agenda items if it meets your concern, but yet supplemental items are there for a reason, because if it couldn't make the cutoff, but it had to get put on the agenda, that allowed it to happen. And you're saying that you still wouldn't like that or would like it?
You know, Councilman Segir, I'm, I'm not going to speculate on what an objection may or may not be. It depends on what the item is. If you recall, I think at the last council meeting, the Zoom council meeting, I think there were two or three matters introduced from the floor. And I, I questioned what they were, just to satisfy my, myself, that it was something relatively urgent that had just come up, that perhaps could not make it onto the original agenda. And I had no objection to those items and stated specifically, I, I have no objection to those items being brought from the floor. It, it just simply depends on what it is, how important it is, what the reason is that for not putting it on the original agenda.
And I do appreciate your concern about the, uh, from the floor, um, items, because that is a concern when they do come from the floor and don't have the opportunity to be published in the timely fashion for everyone to read. But that is how government sometimes operates and has to operate, that things happen in, outside of the timely fashions, and we do have to move things forward. And that's why the state law allows, uh, the, uh, from the floor if we have a unanimous approval to put it on the floor, uh, as well as allowing the public to comment on that. So that is okay from the floor. But again, I was just responding to your complaints about the supplemental agenda. So if that's going to still be the concern, then I don't see how this can fixes that concern. So that, that's my, uh, problem with going back to what it was, because it's going to just keep creating what could be a problem for you and your friends.
Well, I, I think ninety, ninety-five percent of the legislation, you know, is on the main agenda, and this gives us three days notice rather than two. I, I think it's a positive change.
Well, I agree you could take it that long to read it. I understand that. But, uh, we as council members should be reading it faster than that, too, so we know how to adjust and do our work. All right, well, thank you. That's all I need to point out is that, uh, I understand you fix a problem, but then my people come back later and say they, they don't want to fix it, they want to change it back and create another problem, go for it. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes, I'm not for this change at all. George, I am going to state, uh, honestly, so everybody can hear. And I, I, I want to know, is, are people having problems with the audio portion of this? I'm getting a message of unstable. So I'm hearing just about every other word, so I hope you're hearing what I'm saying. But I asked, uh, Councilman Brannigan to delay this, because the next order of business is that I may be the council chairman coming up. And, uh, I don't have a problem, uh, obviously, I don't think I'm going to have a problem of getting who's going to be a first or who's going to be a second. I don't believe it's going to take a long time. And, and Councilman Brannigan told me that was one of his main concerns, uh, that his assistant didn't have time. I don't think I'm going to have that problem. Uh, secondly, I'd like to ask the administration, has this change affected them in any kind of negative way? If the mayor or somebody would like to comment, I'd like to hear about that.
As far as the administration is concerned, no, it is not. Uh, look, we don't get involved in council business on rules and regulations and your, your, your procedures on how you do things, but if you're asking the administration, do we have a position? No, it has not affected us whatsoever.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Again.
No problem.
Changes change, and it's amazing to me that a short time ago, we had five voting for it, and we probably today will have five voting, uh, against, uh, what we're trying to keep going. So, uh, it is what it is, and it shows the, uh, the public that, uh, you know, it's really hard to determine, uh, what direction to go into and why, because again, I asked for this to be delayed, and obviously it wasn't. So thank you very much.
Councilmember McKenney?
Yes, thanks, Council President. I would like to speak, uh, in favor of this. I voted against this previously, because I think that I agree with Councilmember Brannigan that, um, that, you know, this has been something that's been on for twenty to thirty years, um, giving us and the public more time to, um, review the agenda as well as ask questions of the administration or of our fellow colleagues is always better. Um, it, it maximizes the, um, the amount of questions and, you know, for people to fully understand what we're voting on as council members and then as the public to understand as well. I think that giving us back the power to add things on the supplemental agenda, which we obviously use sparingly, uh, is important, because that's something that as a council member, that's one of the main things as a council member, that, the ability to, to do that. And I think that taking that power away from us, um, is, was not confusing, but it was actually lessening our power and our ability. So I think that that is something that we need to, you know, I think that that's, we're moving back in the right direction. I also think that, you know, as a former council president, uh, you know, soliciting the information, getting the motion from the second, it's not that that actually physically takes time, it's making sure that your other council members and your colleagues have time to review, ask the questions, and get back to you. So I think that that's really important in order to be all work together and to build a team. Uh, and I think that this is a really good piece of legislation, as, um, as my colleagues or, or majority of my colleagues said, uh, who has already spoken, they, um, they think that this is going to lead to work transparency, this is going to lead to the ability to ask, ask more questions. I think that this is a step in the right direction, um, and we should make sure that we are being as open as possible. You know, initially, when, when the change was, uh, discussed, I actually thought we should have more time, um, but, you know, moving back to where it was in the past is a, is a good thing for me. So I'll be supporting it. Thank you very much.
Does anyone else have anything, any comments? Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. And, uh, I, obviously, I'm going to be supporting it again.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I obviously, I'm going to be supporting it again because I supported it the first time. As far as Councilman Hayes and Segura, it is it is their prerogative to to bring up questions and talk about it. That that's what makes us a body for the people. So I can I can respect that also. The part that I have some issue with is Councilman Segura to imply that we all learned the new word, walking quorum, to imply that five of the present council members have had anything from the Attorney General or anyone else, but we have on other issues. So that's not mixed the two together. I will say that I haven't spoken to Councilman Brannigan about this at all. I read it on the agenda, and I applied my position on it, which would have been the same. And I've only spoken to one other council person to that effect. We never met. We never was in a room. We never had conversations on the phone. It never happened. So I, you know, we shouldn't imply that or or put those words out there to make people believe that 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 happened. So that never happened. It is our personal opinion that this will be better. And again, who knows better than Councilman Brannigan? We all have different ways of doing things, and time is relative. So what we do as individuals, when we are the council president, will differ from person to person. So I just thought it was important to let the public know that none of that took place. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Is it Councilman Member Brennan?
Thank you. Pardon me. Thank you, Council Chair. And I appreciate all the comments that have been made. And yes, I I'm in support of this as well. Thank you for what you said, Councilman Carroll. And, you know, the the person that's in that seat right now has experience, has been on the council, his assistant has experience and has been an assistant for many years. I don't want it to be understood, or maybe that it was implied that we've rushed with questions or gotten answers. Speaking personally, I think I've asked questions. I I know my colleagues have. We've received the information from all departments and such. And the council president that's sitting in there right now, I think, has the best timeframe for how this has been affecting us. So with that being said, and as some of the colleagues said, it is more transparent, and and there's nothing wrong with that. We've voted on things and said we would look at it in in six months to see if we should go back, such as changing the meetings to Fridays, and some things haven't been changed. So this this is just positive. And and again, I think it's only going to help us going forward and helping those people that sit in that council president chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Brennan. Anyone else? Councilmember Segura?
Thank you, Council President. Look, no qualms here that I'm trying to offend my colleagues when I said about the five vote because I don't know what anybody else was personally doing because they never contacted me, and that's fine. But when the council president called me three weeks ago, a little over three weeks ago, and says, I'm changing this. I've got my five votes. That's it. Then, when I tried to have meetings to discuss it, it's not going to make a difference. I've got my five votes. So I I that's all I'm saying. I don't know if anybody particularly conferred with each other. That's what he told me. That's what I had to go by. So my input was just to explain why I didn't think the need was there and the fact that it was what I was told. Now, yeah, it can go either way. I I don't really, because it, what was there before, I agree, worked. It was only the residents who complained about the problems with the supplemental. If we go back, no problem. They're just going to keep complaining, so that I guess that's par for the course. But don't take any offense to what I said each of the colleagues. This is what I was told by the council president, so I take his word at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? Okay, in closing, I expected curveballs thrown high and tight from Councilman Segura. When I talked to Councilman Segura on the phone and told him I was thinking about doing this, I also told him back in December or January, when this legislation came up for vote, that I have had January the old way, and we will look at this. And then I would make a determination whether to change it back. I feel that it is the best thing to do for the council and for the people that I represent and you represent. The bottom line is, it's a transparency deal. It gives people more time to review the agenda, and it is a good government deal. And I don't know why anyone would be against that. I think that this is the best thing for the city of Kenner, and that's why I'm putting it forward. And the bottom line is, when I talked to Councilman Segura and told him what my plan was, he hung up on me. So that's fine. I hope that my colleagues hear why, understand why I'm doing this. And I feel that they realize the implications and that it is a good government, better way to do things going back to the past. And Councilman Brennan, you are correct. There are there are things that we do that we go forward, we try it and need to be changed back. And there are things that we do that work out and do not need to be changed back. That's all I've got to say. I have a motion by Councilman Brannigan, second by Councilman McKenney.
Council, Council, County President, County President?
Yes.
Well, as I see, and Adam, correct me if you I'm wrong. You first off, you have not closed your public hearing, and you have at least three hands that wish to.
Okay. Wish to. Adam, do we have people to speak?
We do.
Okay.
Please open the mics.
Hold on, Adam. Hold on, Adam.
I'm waiting. Tell me when.
This is Mr. City Attorney. Just to clarify, we're not in a public hearing. This is just.
We're not.
We do need to hear from the public, but we don't have to close the public hearing. After the public, you can call a vote, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Ready for me to go? Okay. Sally Molina, you are first up. You can unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Sally Molina, District Five. I just wanted to to commend the council president and Councilwoman McKenney. Councilwoman Carroll, I completely support this. I am so glad that you guys have, you know, after six months, as you said, noticed that the council does deserve the those extra days. The the public does want those extra days to look at that information, to review it, to be able to better work with you who represent us. And I just really want to commend you, Councilman Brannigan, for putting this on the floor, knowing that you were going to get resistance from your colleagues and to still stand up for the people. I, you know, I can't applaud you louder for that. Same goes for Councilwoman McKenney. Thank you so much for standing up for the people that you represent. And Councilman Carroll, I am in full support of going back to the way it was. It wasn't broken, and thank you so much.
Adam? Adam?
Stacy, you can you can unmute your microphone.
Okay, can you guys hear me? I'm I'm in a car.
Yes, ma'am.
On cell phone. Okay, thank you. I just want to thank you guys for revisiting this issue. To be clear, when y'all first brought it up, I was completely opposed to it. I spoke against it. And I was unhappy, you know, that had passed at the time, but y'all did say that y'all would revisit it, and you are. And that makes me incredibly happy because that's the way government is supposed to work. And I'm so glad that Councilman Brannigan brought this up. We never thought anything, I don't, I don't understand what Mr. Segura was trying to, the point he was trying to make when he was questioning Richard. But the bottom line is, we never supported this measure in the first place. And we're just glad that y'all are going back to the old way. So this is wonderful, and I'm really glad you guys are doing this. I am concerned, of course, in light of the recent Attorney General's letter to Kenner about walking quorums that Mr. Segura is stating that he believed that there was a walking quorum that just came out of his mouth with five council members. So that is concerning. And I have one question. I guess I'd like to ask him. Did you, did you participate in an agenda meeting today? Are those still happening? Could you please answer that, Mr. Segura? And I think that's pretty much it. I just wanted to thank you guys for everything and just ask that one question.
Thank you, Ms. Alessandro. Adam?
Mr. Teff, Mr. Teff, you can unmute your microphone.
Yes, this is Greg Teff, the district. Mr. Segura is actually right. I in the before had very serious problems with the supplemental agenda. Maybe because it come up later on after the agenda is already put out. And a lot of times, it was items that could have been brought up or been put on the agenda and not waiting till the last minute. Problem I've always had with supplemental agendas is that it gives it gives certain or give people the ability to put something off and then add it at the last minute. And that, to me, is the wrong use of the supplemental agenda. Now, since we went to the new line, then it started coming from the floor. There was where we can make a motion to bring something up from the floor, but it went on to the first reading. I have come to the realization that supplemental just, whether it be supplemental or first that something was brought up on the floor, the council's got to do, I guess, what they got to do to bring things forward. Things do happen at the last minute, and that was brought to my attention by Mr. Segura some time ago. And I and I appreciated him explaining all that. So while I don't like supplemental agendas, I think it's up to y'all whether you feel that you have to have it. But as a constituent, I would rather see the agenda when it comes out to be what it is. And then if something did come up, y'all have been adding it from the floor, and you still will be adding it from the floor, even if the council meeting ended with this back. So I'm not sure if you're really accomplishing a whole lot, if it makes it easier. But anyway, I just wanted to clarify that because I know I was one of the ones who complained a lot about supplemental agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teff. Adam, do we have anyone else?
Last one to speak is Peter Mars.
Okay.
You can unmute yourself, Mr. Mars.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. All right. So so I live on the 4200 block of of Illinois Avenue. There's a, Chrissy McKinney has been notified of this. I think last night she witnessed it herself. And there is a manhole cover there at that corner, and it's right near the lift station. And it's been an ongoing problem for the last several years. The company Veolia used to work with the city of Kenner, I believe, to manage to manage the waste, I guess, and apparently they're not in on it anymore. But in any case, the manhole cover is almost constantly leaking fumes that we can smell in our houses. We can smell down the street.
But can you hold on one second, Mr. Mars? We're, that's not the topic that we're talking on now. Mr. Rapia, can he speak at this time on that topic, or should he address that later? Mr. Rapia?
That would appropriately be brought up at the later, at the at the persons wishing to address the council. You're right now on the topic of this rule change.
Okay, Mr. Morris, could you come back at the end of the meeting? In section 20, persons wishing to address the council?
Sure. Any estimate on what time of day that would be?
Probably within the next 30 minutes, I would think.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Do we have, Adam, do we have anyone else wishing to address the council?
I see no other hands, Councilman.
Okay. The only other thing I wanted to add is, if I would have put this legislation on, I would be reversing it. It has nothing to do with who put legislation on. If any of my other colleagues would have done it, I'd be reversing it. Okay, since we have no other discussion, I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-2. Councilmembers Segura and Hayes are opposed. Item 13B is a resolution electing a Kenner City Council President and Vice President effective July 1, 2020.
I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, second by Councilmember Brannigan. Councilmembers, please vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Wait, do we have to say who it is first?
That's in the legislation, but if you'd like to, I can stipulate who it is.
Yes, I would like that.
Okay, so this legislation would is nominating Councilman Hayes to be president, Councilman Carroll to be vice president.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, second by Councilmember Brannigan. Councilmembers, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes. Councilman Hayes?
I abstain. I'm not going to vote for myself.
Okay, so cap, motion passes. Show of hands again, please. Six zero, Councilmember Hayes is abstaining. Item 14 is items.
Chairman?
Councilmember Hayes?
I am told that this position comes with a $2,000 annual increase in salary plus a monthly telephone allotment. I am, I will not accept it, don't want it. Just want to put that on record. Thank you so much.
Are you taking the Ferrari? Natalie, let's go.
Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contract and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 12,714, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Casco Industries Incorporated for the purchase of personal protective equipment, turnout gear for the fire department in accordance with bid number 19-6524 and an amount not to exceed $78,468.75.
I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, second by Councilmember Wilmot. Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilman, Councilman?
Yes, yes.
You have one member of the public that would like to speak.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't see the hand. Go ahead, Adam.
Stacy, you can unmute yourself.
I'm sorry, Adam. That was a mistake.
Okay.
You see that? I knew that, Adam. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, second by Councilmember Wilmot. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 12,715, an ordinance ratifying the proposal for excess workers' compensation insurance for the period of July 1, 2020 through July 1, 2021.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, second by Councilmembers Segura. But I understand we have an amendment to this legislation?
Yes, sir, we do. I've received an amendment to amend section one to clarify that Safety National Casualty Corporation is receiving this proposal.
Any discussion? Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted, I guess, legal, if they would, just just clarify what this legislation is for, just just for clarification for the public audience.
Make sure I'm off of mute. This is our excess workers' comp insurance policy. It runs January, July 1 to July 1 every year. The proposal that has come in is for our premium will be $124,739. It is for, we have a self-insured retention of a little over $500,000. And it is a recommendation both of our agent, our insurance agent, who's in the audience, if you need any further clarification, Councilman, and our outside consultant that this of the proposals we received, this is the best one for Kenner. And actually, I think it's a, it's about a. And actually, I think it's a, it's about a 20% increase in premium from last year.
Anyone else?
That's all I have.
I have a motion by council member Hayes, second by council member Segura to amend. Council member, council, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0 on your amendment.
Back to the original legislation. I have a motion by council member Hayes, second by council member Segura. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 12,716. An ordinance ratifying the proposal for casualty package insurance for the period of July 1st, 2020 through July 1st, 2021.
I have a motion by council member Brennan, second by council member Carroll. I understand that we have an amendment on this legislation?
Yes, sir, we do. Again, we will be amending section 1 to note that American Alternative Insurance Corporation, Munich RE, will be receiving the proposal for this insurance.
Does anyone need to speak on this? Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, if we can just have clarification for the, for the public to know from legal what this is about.
And again, I have, if we get too far into the details, I do have our insurance agent, Mr. Dahl, here, who can answer more detailed questions than I can. And I will, what we're doing, this is our, for lack of a better term, general liability policies. It covers auto, general liability, and a number of other liability type issues. We have been in the past, and at least since I've been here, so that's 2016, Berkeley Insurance Company has been the carrier for us. We are recommending a change from Berkeley to the Munich group. And the reason for that is that Berkeley wanted to increase our premiums about 90% from the current expiring policy of roughly $359,000 a year to almost $700,000 a year in premium. Munich has come in and quoted almost an identical policy program that we've had in the past. It is a $5 million limit with a $10 million aggregate. We are, and it's only a 1.67% premium increase. So we're going from, as I said, round, round figures, 359,000 in premium to 365,000 in premium. And it's our recommendation that we go with Munich.
Thank you for that summary. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything to say? I thought Councilman Hayes, did you have your hand up?
I did, but I'm losing you all on the audio portion. But I did want to really commend Dahl Insurance. I think I may have heard that it was only a 1.5% increase, and that's great. Again, thank you for saving us some money on that, only $5,000 more. Thank you for the good work. It's, it's really important in this day and age with the tight funds that we're looking at.
Guys, I lost my screen.
I hope you're hearing.
I lost my screen. Can y'all hear me?
I can see and hear you, councilman.
Okay, I'm back now. Okay. I have a motion by council member Brennan, second by council member Carroll to amend. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Back to the original motion. I have a motion by council member Brennan, second by council member Carroll. Please vote on the ordinance as amended.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance approving the lease of lots 76, 77, 78, and 79, square 181 Veteran Heights subdivision, Kenner Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, to branch communication for the purpose of placing a cell tower as shown on the attached survey by SMW Engineering Group, Incorporated, dated May 19th, 2020. Item 16B is an ordinance approving the purchase of modular office buildings for an amount not to exceed $15,000. Item 16C is a resolution amending Rule 42 of the Rules of Organization, Business, Order, and Procedure of the Council of the City of Kenner. Item 16D is a resolution amending Council Rule 15.4 of the Rules of Organization, Business, Order, and Procedure of the Council of the City of Kenner. Item 16E is an ordinance levying the annual tax mileage rates for the year 2020, totaling 17 and 1,700 mils on the dollar of the assessed valuation of all taxable property within the corporate limits of the city of Kenner, Louisiana on the 2020 tax roll. The clerk needs to advise the public that this ordinance will be heard for public comment on July 24th, 2020, pending all legals are advertised correctly. Item 17 is reports from the council and our special committees.
Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to inform the council and the public of a heartwarming story that I got a letter on. Looks like sometime early June. I'm going to describe what I saw on Facebook. Somebody filmed in the Chateau Estates area. They had a mother duck, and it had following probably, I think it was 12 ducklings. And it was just a wonderful sight to see, again, in the Chateau Estates area. On however, on June 9th, which was a Tuesday, these little, the mama duck was walking across one of the drains, and all the little ducklings, there was 12 of them, they all fell into the drain, all 12 of them. So they were stuck in the drain. We had a lot of former elected officials, elected officials. We had administrative people throughout the entire day trying to get these ducklings out of the drain because the neighborhood in that surrounding area, they all, they all came together. I actually arrived on site, and they must have had five ladies hovering around the drain, and they were all panicking because of these ducklings. But anyway, I have a letter. I want to read part of it. I think it's just, it's just good, good. Especially, it shows how we are here in Kenner. We know that there's many pressing issues in the day and life of our police officers and firefighters. We know officers and firefighters had a choice as to whether they wanted to lend a hand or dismiss this concern. The fact that these guys accepted the challenge with a smile, professionalism, empathy for our neighbors who were all concerned about the little babies would drown shows character of the individuals who serve in Kenner. This reminds us of the reason many of us have bought our homes in Kenner and continue to call Kenner our home. Not only are police officers, firefighters protect us, they work to build community relations with Kenner neighbors, making Kenner a place where families want to raise their children. As a cohesive and united neighborhood, we want to send our sincere thanks and appreciation for the little extra time that all these individuals took from their schedules to assist with rescue that was very important to our neighborhood. Since we have ponds at the golf course, we have lots of duck activity in Chateau. Our ducks are important to us. Of course, we will be complaining next week when we cannot get them out of our swimming pools. To end, thank you for your kindness. A few minutes of your time meant the world to the neighborhood, and we support you very much. Thank you, and we appreciate you. And I just wanted to chime in. That's, that's, that's what we're about. That's fantastic. It's good to see. And they did get the duckling. So good ending to the story. So thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President. I wanted to share that with everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Brennan?
Thank you, Council Chair. Councilman Wilmot, thank you for that story. It really quacked me up.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes, I'd like to say something that's really important. We had a major happening this last week. The governor signed a bill, and I'm really bringing this up because of the good work of our two representatives in helping us do this. And it's Debbie Bilio in her first term and Representative Joe Stagni. The governor signed a bill allowing us to operate a 99-year commercial lease at Lake Town. Before, we just had a shorter term.
Councilman Hayes?
And what's out there. Again, one of our major assets. So again, please recognize the good work of Representative Debbie Bilio carrying a flag for us in her first term. And again, we've talked about this for 20 years probably. And Joe Stagni for really helping us out on this. This is very, very important to, to what we're trying to do. Secondly, we have, and you may have seen this on some of our social media. I hope y'all are hearing me because I'm having a hard time hearing the audio of this transmission. But we have an event tomorrow called Cruising the Lake, and it's really in support of safe harbor, which helps domestic in violence and abuse victims. This is brought to us by David and Lee Getzinger. And it really what it is, is seven events around the lake, and we're one of the areas that people can stop. It's eight to five, and they get a little stamp every time they stop at one of these locations. And if you stop at at least five of the seven locations, you're able to participate in a drawing of four $100 prizes. Again, good cause. It's going to be good weather. So please, everybody, look at the social media posts that we have. And it's going to be Mandeville. It's going to be Slidell. It's going to be Kenner. It's going to be Madisonville, Ponchatoula, and La Platte. So it sounds like a good day for a good cause. I hope everybody gets a chance to participate. And lastly, Happy Father's Day to everybody. Everybody have a good and safe weekend.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would be remiss if I didn't, if I didn't take the time and the opportunity to acknowledge the, the holiday that we are celebrating today in fifth, in 46 of the 50 states in the United States as a state holiday, and some are federal holidays. And today is Juneteenth, June 19th. And just to be able to read a little information about it, because some people in the audience, and maybe some on the council, may not know some of the things about it. And as a, as a child of former slaves and possibly former slave owners, I don't know. But the fact is, this is something that is American history. It has been taking place since 1865. And just to, I'd like to read a little short information on it. Juneteenth is the nation's only deliberate observance of formally ending racial slavery. June 18th, 1865, General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas to enforce Texas that the slaves were free in all of the Confederate states. Even though President Lincoln had issued the Emancipation Proclamation in late 1863, it wasn't until June 19th, 1865, after the general arrived to inform the people of Texas and probably some of the southern states. So, you know, this is important. Obviously, it's June. It was on the 19th, hence the name June 19th. But this particular holiday has not only identified that specific historic moment, but it also has brought now with future and past celebrations the freedom of all Americans while encouraging continuous self-development and a respect for all cultures. So it is something that obviously it has the overtones for African-Americans, but it is for everyone to be able to celebrate in their own way how they feel the United States and their respect for their culture. So I'd like to thank all of the cities, all of the organizations that are celebrating it today. And we look forward for the day to go on. Good weather, good information throughout the weekend for Juneteenth from 1865. And the last part that I want to say that after that, in December, the United States ratified the 13th Amendment abolishing slavery. So here we are today. And all of the things that are going around in the country, we are better today because of that. And we look forward to getting better. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Anyone else? I would just like to thank Fire Chief Terrance Morris in the fire department for getting the Jan Deuces as fast as they did. Obviously, over a hundred-year-old building with that old wood goes up pretty quick. And I, I wish Troy some luck, and hopefully he gets that thing rebuilt so we don't have to miss those meatballs anymore. Natalie?
Yes, sir. Item 18 is new business. We have none. Item 19 is unfinished business and a motion to reconsider or remove from a table position. We have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Okay, Adam, do we have anyone out there?
They're, they're coming in right now. I got Greg Tap.
There, there's one thing that we're changing, or you have three minutes to speak, and we've been having problems with people speaking over. And going, last time it was like four and a half minutes. So we will be turning the mic off when I put the three minutes on up. All right, I would like the person that was speaking that we cut off, our cutoff, Mr. Morris, I would like to take him first. It's been about 25 minutes since, you know, he, he was there, and I told him within 30.
Yeah, I'll bring him up. I'll bring him up right now. Mr. Mars, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, yeah. Can you hear me right now?
Yes.
Okay. So just to recap really quickly, what I was calling about, on the corner of 42nd and Illinois, I think there, there may be a, some kind of deficiency or like a quack in the manhole cover because we are constantly smelling just sewage backup smell coming out of that manhole. We spend a lot of time out on the corner right there. Neighbor, our neighbors congregate out there on a, on a lonesome, on a poor swing. Just try to get outdoors, but the smell is constantly chasing us back into our houses where we can actually sometimes smell, smell that disgusting smell as well. So it's been worked on several times over the past few years, and it's never really gotten completely better. And it's, quite honestly, it's disgusting, and I think it's a health hazard. Veolia was the company who used to work on that out here in Kenner. Apparently, they're not part of the picture anymore. And I believe it all started when the lift station was installed right here on 42nd near Illinois. As far as what to do to fix it, I really am not sure, but I hope that it can get some attention. It more recently got worse once again when Verizon came out and laid down some new cable out there. So I'm not really sure, you know, who, who's, who's purview that falls under. Chrissy McKinney recommended that we, that we join the meeting and bring it up. So hopefully it can get some attention that way. And yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, so it's just really bad. I mean, it's, it's getting to the point where we can't even like quack open our doors or windows to let fresh air into our house because the air is so contaminated right around our houses. So so, yeah, anything, I mean, can y'all recommend anyone who we should call about this, or is me talking about it in this meeting enough, so to speak? Or, you know, what's, what would be the next step that the council would recommend?
Mayor Zahn?
This is, I know Councilman Hayes has his hand up, and I can go back a little bit to my district three days. I was going to say that's near that lift station that was installed during those days. It has been on and off a problem. As a district three councilman, I went out there a couple of times. I believe after I left to go to the parish council, it was addressed. Maybe it was not. Veolia did do that work at one time. We still have some people with us from Veolia. I directed. Joanne Missoni is now working for the city of Kenner for our own sewage department. I will, if Joanne's on here, I know she is. Joanne, I need to get you and Wilbur to look at that today. And get, if you could, if you could get Michelle, I don't know how we do this, usually when we're live, Michelle Lala, my assistant, you can get this gentleman's phone number. I don't know if you want to put that out on public in his, in his name, but you can call Michelle Lala at 468-7240. They will get you in touch with her. Get your information to her. And Michelle, if you can get that to Joanne in Wilbur, we will be out there today or at least by tomorrow looking at it. I will talk with Councilman Hayes, who is always helpful with that. Always, you're welcome to come to a council meeting, but if you call us sooner, we can always get to it sooner instead of having to go through the council meeting. But if you call us sooner, we can always get to it sooner instead of having to go through the council meeting procedure.
Okay, okay. That sounds good. Perfect.
She's gonna, don't discuss your phone number in public, but she'll call to that four six eight seven two four zero. And the message will get to Michelle, my assistant, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes, Mr. Marsh, really thank you so much for bringing us our attention. This is really the first time I'm hearing this. I will give you my cell phone number. My cell phone number is three eight two eight two five five. So call me, please. And I will be, I'll find your phone number. We'll be in touch with you. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilman Hayes. Ms. Missoni.
Mr. Marsh, are you available to meet this afternoon? Because Hubert and I would be happy to meet with you this afternoon.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, Joanne, why don't you give Mr. Marsh your cell phone number also? And Councilman Hayes already did his. Y'all can beat him out there this afternoon and get it going a lot quicker.
Yes, Mr. Marsh, my phone number is.
Got it. Okay, are you finished, Peter? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Adam.
Next up is Mr. Teft. Greg, you can unmute yourself.
Yes, Greg Tapley, district. Just got a couple of questions. One is, do we have any idea when our parks will be reopened? And the next question is, would it also be possible to have a garbage can and maybe a signage on littering at the parking lot by the park at the pavilion? There seems to be a lot of littering and people dumping trash all over the place around the pavilion. And I don't know if they can get in there, but it looks, that's also no offensive, but the parking lot, you know, produced the garbage container and also the, like I said, signage on do not litter. I think some people don't realize that's supposed to be stored on the ground. The other thing I wanted to ask too is, how long it takes a new business to obtain an occupational license to get it approved? And a subpart of that question I have is, is it mandatory that they have a lease in hand in order to apply for the occupational license? That is all that I have. Yeah.
Is that it, Mr. Teft?
That is it.
Okay. Councilman Brennan, unmute.
Thank you, Council Chair. Mr. Teft, if you still listen, and I'm going to call you later on today, I couldn't hear everything you were saying about the cans that was fading in. So we can get clarification on that. I think you said it was at the city park, and we can work with the, the people that assist us in getting that resolved.
And.
Mayor Zahn.
Mr. Teft, I'd like to answer the first part of your question. As you know, like I said earlier part of the meeting, we just got some of our crews back. So yes, we do have some things that we have to address. We've been using contractors to keep the, the grass cut, things that are essential. We do need to get the crews back out. I believe they're out there this morning, even this afternoon, doing some cleanup. There's a lot to get done right now. The city park is one of them. Addressing the trash in other areas is one of them too. And getting our people back in, and like I spoke about in the first part of the meeting, a slow return of a recover, a slow return to work as we're recovering from the things that we've been through. So between now and the Fourth of July, after the Fourth of July, that's when we will start re, looking at how we reopen things with nothing changing money.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Adam, next.
Next up is Saylee Malina. Saylee, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you, Adam. Saylee Malina, District Five. Well, first, I want to commend the mayor for the Zoom meetings. I know that, you know, like we're overusing the word complaint, complaint. Sometimes it's just an objection or a concern. And I know that, you know, some people may complain about almost every little thing. But I don't want to complain about the Zoom meetings. I want to commend the fact that Kenner has continued business as usual and has used the Zoom meetings to make sure that we stay connected and in tune to what's going on. So I definitely want to thank him for that. Now, I do want to bring up an area of concern as Mr. Teft said. I don't know how often Mr. Teft visits the park, but I'm a grandmother and I go to the park with my grandchildren. And yes, there is a lot of trash that some of the residents have begun to pick up on, on our own and different things like that. Because we understand that the city is working at a minimum at this point. But there's also things that, for example, like the Christmas lights that are still on some of the trees that are falling down after some of these storms and the rains and the different things that we experience here in South Louisiana. Those lights still are a danger. And if I recollect correctly, back in May of twenty nineteen, Mr. Pittfield was very upset with, with my online group and with myself because we brought up some of these concerns. And he no longer replies or even has conversations with us. There's no way for us to get any kind of relief from him. We don't know how to address him. Yesterday, he was addressed online as well and reached out as to when the lakefront park will open, as to when Masport Alino will be available for use, as to when these lights will be down. And he refuses to answer those questions. So I'd like to know if anyone on, you know, in the administration are, would like to or can answer those questions for the residents. We want to use these parks, and we want to know what we can do. And we understand that the trash is an issue, and, and that's part of the residents do that. And we need to take responsibility for that as well. But as far as the liabilities or the dangers, the exposed wires, those things, when can we look forward to having those things rectified?
Is that it, State?
Saylee, Saylee.
Okay, Mayor Zahn, you had your hand up?
Yeah. First of all, thank you for the support for the Zoom meetings. I do think, like you, that these are working really well, considering the situation that we're in. So thank you for that support. And we were out there probably for the last mass giveaway, food giveaway, whatever it was. And I, I thought we, I did see some hanging lights because of some wind that had come through. I thought we had removed all those. If you could tell us exactly what you see, because I have not seen something recently, but that doesn't mean that it's not out there. We will get back out there and do it. And they are there right now. Because when I was saying before that we were trying to get out there today, I got a text message from Public Works Director, Assistant Director, and told, told me that we do have crews out at Kenner City Park right this moment. I'm being told right now by the General Services Director that they have gotten all the lights out the trees as of today. But they will look to see if there's some more that maybe they have missed. Saylee, when was the last time you saw that? Was it like yesterday? And I'm just trying to get a timeframe.
Yes, sir. It was as soon as yesterday. And it just will happen because of the winds when they fall down there, right at a, at a space where a child's running wouldn't see them.
Yeah, I get it. And I, and I think they addressed it this morning. And I go back to, we have not had the people to do those things except for keeping our services going for the essential services that we need with the storm coming and all that. And that's the comments that I've made in the past. He's telling me they did remove the ones from the trees, but they may have missed some. So we, they will go back and check again today to make sure. Look, you, you know how to get in touch with me. If you need to get in touch with me, call me directly, call Michelle. We'll, we'll go back out there. If you can narrow it down, that's something we may be missing. As for the park, you asked about Lake Town, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay, as for Lake Town being open, I go back to what I said in the beginning. We're just getting our crews back. We're just getting our crews back to do some things. We have got to address Lake Town. Lake Town was, was closed, so therefore it's not essential to keep everything done out there. We've got to go out there and we got to clean up. We also have to keep in mind that the crews that come back, they might not be the crews that always at ballparks, they might not be the crews that we have out there as supervisors. A lot of our supervisors in recreation are over a certain age, and I'd rather not say the age that they are, but they're over a certain age. So in COVID, some people over a certain age cannot return to work as of yet. So we're trying, as you said in the beginning, you agree with me, keeping everyone safe, basically. On these Zooms, we got to keep our older employees also safe. So those are the things that we're addressing between now and after July fourth. I keep saying at every council meeting, and I said it again today, we're working toward getting some of those things back. And it was something else she said, and I can't remember what it was.
Um, neither can I. But thank you so much for your answer. I appreciate it. And I appreciate you trying to keep everyone safe. I agree with that. I do support.
Thank you.
Good government.
Thank you.
Okay, Adam, who do we have next?
Up next is Al Morella. You can unmute, Mr. Morella.
Al Morella, forty-two sixty East Royal Drive, district forty-eight years. I too want to commend the Fire Department for their quick response to the fire action deuces in South Kenner. Second, I want to comment on an article in The Advocate on June thirteenth. I advise this council to familiarize yourself with the state open meetings laws. And I want to direct this to our legal department. When you render a legal decision, make sure that it's in line with the open meetings laws. If not, you are going to have the problems that you're facing right now contained in that article. The people of Kenner are a lot smarter than what you all give them credit for. Third, your comments, Mayor, on the meetings is well taken. But I fully expect to have a face-to-face on July ninth, and I'm going to tell you why. One, there is a double standard on the guidelines set forth by the governor, not only on a local level of our government, but on the state level as well. And if Justin Parish can have a face-to-face successfully, then there's no reason why Kenner can't. So I don't want you all down there to get too comfortable with these Zoom meetings because I got a lot more business to take care of than I want to take care. This business needs to be taken care of face-to-face. Last, in closing, the gentleman that spoke about the sewer problem, we've taken on eighty million dollars in bond debt to upgrade our sewer system and to make it better, to improve it, so that people wouldn't have to be going through this sort of thing. So I'd like to know where this, what, what, where this eighty million dollars is going? Who are contractors that are coming in here and doing this work? And we're not seeing, this neighborhood is not seeing any improvements at all. Now, that's all I have. Anybody got any comments, any questions for me? Thank you.
Mayor Zahn.
Unmute, Mayor.
Sorry, I just want to comment again on the, and I said in the beginning, I didn't want to go and say that Justin Parish, the state, or other entities are doing something right or wrong. But if we're going to be compared directly to Justin Parish, I need to share this. Justin Parish has face-to-face meetings, but they don't have the same issue with the size of their council chambers. Seating is different. The way they're spaced out is different. KTV compared to where they film over there has more room. Their filming is different. I made all these comments in the early part of the meeting. So if you're going to compare us directly to Justin Parish, they also, as we start to tell the seventeenth person, they cannot come into the council chamber. Their number probably is different, okay? They probably have more that they can allow into the council chamber because the layout is different and it's bigger. But they also, with, I guess, the general public may not realize unless you attend the council meetings, and Mr. Morella, I would assume is attending the council meetings, but I know also he's told me he gets there early enough that he gets into the council chambers at Justin Parish. They are putting the overflow, once they reach their capacity by the governor's guidelines, which are not double standards, they're putting them in waiting rooms. If you've been in the Yenney Building compared to the City Hall campus, there's a big difference. There's a big difference in how we're set up and how those council chambers are set up compared to the, to the Joe Yenney Building and those council chambers. So you can have people in other rooms, but guess what they're still doing? To my knowledge, they're still zooming in. So they're still not physically, they might physically be in the Yenney Building, but you can physically be in your house right now and have the same input with this council as what you do in a waiting room over in the parish. I know it's a little confusing. You got to really be on this end of the, of the iPad or the computer to figure it out and also be part of it, just like you all are. This is working because, like Saylee Malina said, basically, it's keeping us safe, and it's the way we have to do it for right now. So not to argue, Mr. Morella, but I, I just, you know, let's not have the double standards that we compare ourselves to Justin Parish. I did not want to do that early on, but when someone brings it up, there's a big difference. There's a big difference between the council chambers. There's a big difference on the buildings. There's a big difference on how they do it. And it's a lot of things that we can't do here. Everybody's different, I guess, just like it is in New Orleans, because they still doing the same thing.
Thank you, Mayor Zahn. Adam Campu.
Up next is Mr. Brown. You can go ahead, Richard.
Okay, thank you. I was thinking that Stacy Alessandro was ahead of me, but that's all right. First off, Mr. President, I want to commend you and congratulate you on, on how well you served over this past six months as council president. I think you have done an outstanding job, some of it under trying circumstances. I commend you. I thank you. And, and I wish your successor, Glenn Hayes, the, the best of luck. And I've got some more comments about that I'll come back to in just a minute. And, and I also want to, want to compliment the council and the mayor on these Zoom meetings. They have worked very well. And, and I'm, I'm very pleased with the way they have gone. I might just to get back in person, but these have worked well. The, I want to follow up on something that Al Morella touched on, and that's the letter from the Attorney General to the City Council dated June eleventh regarding several incidents regarding the, the council's limitation on five speakers per side, which I understand you're planning to take care of. That's on the agenda for next time. And not allowing photographs, and also about the, these agenda meetings. And I was, was stunned at the, at the council meeting on March fifth, which is what precipitated this letter. When the council clerk started announcing that photographs were not permitted, recordings not permitted, cell phones are not permitted. None of those are rules. We don't have any such rules. And the state open meetings law very specifically and explicitly permits members of the public to take photographs and to record and even to livestream the meetings. I was surprised that out of the seven council members, all of whom should know the, the open meetings law, nobody said anything. The city attorney, who certainly should know it, didn't say anything. The, the CAO, who is an attorney and former parish attorney, didn't say anything. The deputy CAO, who's a former kind of city attorney, didn't say anything. Nor the mayor, who's a longtime council member. That's twelve of y'all. I would think all twelve of you should have known that photographs were permitted. I was stunned that nobody, that nobody objected and said, wait a minute, doesn't the open meetings law give the people the right to take photographs? And the last point has to do with the Attorney General's admonition on the, the, these agenda meetings. And I was stunned at this past meeting at Mr. Hayes basically criticizing Councilman Carroll for discussing things in public. And he said, you, you should, you should bring these up at our pre-meetings, discuss this in private behind closed doors. That's the exact opposite of what the open meetings law provides. Mr. President, I know my time is up. I was going to say something about.
Okay, Adam Campu.
You want the next up?
Yes.
Is Melody Lawson. Melody, you can unmute yourself.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Melody Lawson, one thirteen Holy Cross Place, District Five. On last week, I, along with a few other concerned citizens, had the pleasure of meeting with Mayor Zahn, Chief Blazer, Timothy Shaw, and Officer Bougainheim of the Community Relations Division to discuss some of the key issues taking place globally, more specifically nationally, with regard to race relations and police brutality. As a lifelong resident of Kenner, As a lifelong resident of Kenner and former member of KPD, I was pleased, not surprised, to learn that our current use of force policy already includes many of the key tenants of the eight can't wait police reform agenda that the rest of the nation is just beginning to consider and adopt. It is our hope that we are able to continue that conversation, and we're eventually able to reach out to the community and play out some of the things that we discussed in that initial meeting. We believe that the positive efforts of law enforcement officers, administrators, and community leaders should provide transparency to the people whom they serve, and that they actually should be recognized for their efforts as well. So I remain Kenner proud, and I hope that we are able to get together at a later time to achieve those goals that we discussed in that meeting. Lastly, I know that Ivy Waste has been the topic of many contentious debates, but I would like to personally recognize them for a job well done. We had a massive tree fall on our house after a recent storm. And we hired a crew to come out and clear it out. I called Ivy Waste on Monday before Tuesday at noon. They'd already brought the gravel machine out and cleared it out, did a beautiful job with that. The very same day I called to lease out a 30-yard dumpster to for a separate project, the very next day they came out, delivered that, and did an amazing job. So I just wanted to commend them for a job well done. I know you guys have got a lot of clack for that, but I wanted to personally thank the mayor and the council for your efforts for that. They've done an amazing job for us. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd just like to tell Ms. Lawson, you know, thank you for your support, you and your family's support to the city of Kenner for all the years that you've been here. Like myself, you know, I'm part of a fifth generation that have lived in the city of Kenner. And no matter what you feel about our administration, mayor, police force, and all, we are, we have gotten better. I mean, if you go back five generations from where I, from my family to where we are today, we've gotten better. But we shouldn't rest on our laurels because we have to improve, not only for now, but for my children and grandchildren. And I think that is a position we should always take. So while we think, support the police force, the Fire Department, EMS, code, humane, all of that is great, but we can always get better. So along with the community support like yourself and the administration, you know, it is good to hear that the mayor, the police chief met with some of the community members to address these topics. And the only way we become better and sustain where we are is through communication. So thank you, guys. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Police Chief and the Fire Chief for attending this meeting. And I would like to ask, I don't know if it will come from the mayor or come from the police chief or both, I'd like to get a copy of the use of force from the Police Department because I have been asked on a number of occasions from different organizations and churches, whatever. And I'm not up to speed on what it is, so I'd like to get a copy of the Kenner Police Department use of force. So I will become astute in it and to be able to share. So I'm asking the chief or the administration to forward that to me, to my office next Monday, the use of force from the police chief. Police Department, excuse me.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll.
So Mayor, or I don't know, I'm not sure if the chief is online. Should, I'm asking to receive that and.
Yes. He's got his hand up.
Chief.
Yes. Yes, I'll get it to your office and any other council person or the public, you know, there's a means to get this through public records request, but yes, I can send it to your office. It's kind of, the way our rules are set up, I have a use of force policy that addressed an overall use of force. You know, in other areas of our policy manual is, we have use of force, reporting uses of force and stuff like that. So I mean, it's it's multiple policies. But just to give a, you know, the meeting last week, you know, the eight topics that are being discussed now, we've had these topics implemented at the Kenner Police Department. The latest one was over five years ago. So we've had these in place now for at least five years. And a lot of it stems from the President's 21st Policing Task Force that, I guess, issued their report in 2015 under the Obama administration that kind of went through, you know, what should be covered in modern policing and tactics. And to be honest with you, the state of Louisiana has made great, I guess, advancements in police training over the last, within the last 10 years. Prior to that, law enforcement officers in Louisiana only had to do annual training of shooting a gun once a year at a paper target. We have been having hundreds and hundreds of hours of in-service training for the last at least 20 years here at the Kenner Police Department. So we have been advocates through Louisiana Chiefs Association to implement more training, and we finally made a lot of ground that, you know, Kenner is one of the larger police departments in the state of Louisiana. And my, our, I guess, pushback is always that these smaller departments really can't do all the training. So I do believe that the climate today, they're not going to have a choice. They, you know, it's going to be mandated, the training. So, but no, I'll get the policies to to you. I'm willing to meet with anybody. I mean, we're assisting in a a rally that's going on right outside of City Hall, you know, as this meeting's taking place. You know, and like I said, I'll meet and discuss with anyone, you know, what we have. And if someone says there's a void in our policy, you know, we can discuss it and kind of why we have things that we have. I mean, you know, the chokeholds are prohibited, the carotid holds and things like that around the neck area have been, you know, prohibited in the Kenner Police Department for many, many, many years. So. But I guess not to ramble on about it. I'll get the policies to you. Whoever wants to meet, I mean, we had several people from the administration in the community in this meeting. And a lot of the things, I let them talk and I'm aware we had these in policy. And I guess it's, I guess, I guess some of my fault that the community doesn't know, but how do you come out and say that we prohibit all this stuff when, you know, just, just saying it every day? I mean, we have the stuff in place. As some of y'all know, it's very lengthy, and it's a, you know, very detailed and lengthy policy manual. In some, some aspects, it's too detailed. So, but that's it. It'll be, you know, Monday. We'll email it over to you.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor Zahn, you had your hand up. Do you want to speak on this?
No, I was trying to say that the chief was raising his hand, and I thought you were moving on. I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, again, thank you for the time that you met with the community and the mayor again. I have had the privilege of of going to Bambal High School with a number of your former police officers who have retired. And by that personal relationship, we have discussed different things that the Kenner Police Department has have been doing for a long time. So I am privy to that, but some of the information I'm not. So to catch up on that is perfect. And once I receive that from you, I will definitely afford the opportunity for you and I to speak, to be able to get a better understanding before I disseminate any of the information. And I agree, if you overwhelm people with stuff, they, a lot of stuff is missed. So anything that, once I get it, you and I can talk about it. And to be able to present something to the public that is simple to read and to be able to understand perfectly relates to your department, to avoid any misunderstanding. So thanks again. Thanks again for the opportunity to meet, to discuss. And again, thank the group that met. And this is what makes Kenner, the city of Kenner, a great place to live. So we look forward to that. Thanks again, Chief. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Councilmember Wilmont.
Thank you, Mr. President. I presume I'm unmuted. I wanted to cover just a couple of quick topics. First off, thank you, Chief, for your openness with that issue. And secondly, I'd like to speak about the 2020 census. Of course, the numbers, from what I understand, have been reportedly low. And it's important to be recognized on the census, of course, because our region gets funding, federal funding for schools, roads, hospitals, very, very important funding. So I highly encourage those folks to, who haven't done the census yet, to please do so. And also, Troy Deuce's Restaurant, I certainly admire the work effort that that man has and the good food that he produces. And I hope he comes back bigger, better, and stronger in the future. Also, I wanted to thank Council President George Branigan for his last six months of service as council president. Good job, tough issues throughout that six months. And I wanted to wish all those fathers out there Happy Father's Day. Thank you.
Okay, we have one more speaker. Adam.
Stacy Alessandro, you can unmute yourself.
Hello.
Hey.
Hi, sorry. Okay, um, I was just wondering, in light of the recent Attorney General's letter, like I was saying earlier to the city of Kenner about the open meetings violations, that he specifically referenced the walking quorums. And I also pointed out earlier, Mr. Segura had mentioned that those to.
Can't hear you.
I think she, I think her feed collapsed.
Adam, can you contact her?
I could try to, yes.
Just go to the next, if you want to, George.
Okay, do we have anyone else, Adam?
There are no other speakers.
All right, then just wait.
Give a minute to.
Well, no, I mean, she's got her, that's not counting for her time.
No, no. But what do you want to do? What do we do?
I think we need to, I mean, we lost, I think you need to wait for, I mean, I would think, city attorney, Mr. Rapier, don't you think we have to wait a few moments?
If it failed, you know, she lost her feed, we ought to give her a few, a minute, a couple of minutes to try to get back in.
Exactly.
Otherwise, you potentially run into a problem of her getting properly cut off, although it wasn't the city's fault. It's the technology.
But I think you still got to give a resident the opportunity to dial back in.
You have, you have to give her an opportunity to get back on.
Richard Brown's hand just came back up.
That, maybe, maybe they're together.
Councilman, do you want me to unmute him to find out?
Yeah, let's find out what the deal is, if he knows.
Yeah, thank you, Adam. Yes, Stacy, just a second, call me. I've got her on the phone. If it's okay, I can maybe ask her a question. Can you all hang on just one second? Stacy, are you still here? Or you want me to, let me put you on speaker. If this is okay, Mr. President, I'm going to put Stacy on speaker and let her ask that way. All right. Hang on, Stacy. I'm just going to put you on speaker and hold you up to my, my computer. Hang on.
Okay, Stacy has about two minutes and 30 seconds. I have to restart the clock. Yes.
All right, go, Stacy.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I was just wondering, in light of the Attorney General's opinions, talking about walking for, have you guys had an agenda meeting for this meeting? I had asked Councilman Segura, and I don't think he heard me, so Councilman Segura, could you please answer that question? Have y'all had an agenda meeting for this meeting?
Anything else, Stacy? Or do you want to wait for him to answer?
I'm waiting for Councilman Segura to answer. I want to give him the opportunity to answer, yes or no.
General rule is we gave you your time. We can answer when you're finished.
Well, I didn't want to yield the rest of my time. I mean, you have no problem talking to bringing up Richard Brown or other members, we'll ask them a question, back and forth dialogue, and I can't ask one simple yes or no question without yielding the rest of my time? I mean, it's very simple. Did you have an agenda meeting for this meeting or not? Okay, well, I guess that's it then. Thanks for nothing. Bye-bye.
Councilmembers, a here.
I don't think she quite understood what I was trying to get across. We don't, I personally would prefer not to interrupt their time. It's not a yielding question. I'll wait till they finish and then address them, and that's what I'll do now that she's finished. I attend a lot of meetings with the administration to help my district get things done. And that meeting can be with the administration, be with another councilman. That doesn't make it a walking quorum. The term that she used, opinion from the Attorney General, correct me, Mr. Rapier, did we receive an opinion from the Attorney General on that?
No, no, sir, we did not receive an opinion. We received the letter that raised in the Attorney General's mind some concern, but it was not an opinion. An opinion, an opinion from the Attorney General comes out with an opinion number. This was not an opinion.
That's what I kind of inferred when I saw the letter. So the question of walking quorum relative to a term agenda meeting, if the administration asks councilmen to come to a meeting anytime, as long as there's no more than the three, there's no four councilmen there to constitute a quorum, it's not a quorum of the council. As I would take it, and correct me, Mr. Rapier, if I'm wrong, the walking quorum would be is if one of us leave that meeting and then go have further conversations with other council members who were not present at that meeting as to what took place at the meeting. Is that what a walking quorum is?
It's close to what a walking quorum is.
Okay, well, then I don't think we've done anything wrong. So there's my answer.
So Councilman Segura, when you brought it up in 13A, saying that I had a walking quorum, obviously you were wrong.
Well, I'm not saying I'm wrong. I just brought it up.
Yeah, that's cute. All right, anyone else have to speak? I just want to thank everybody for working with me the last six months. I really enjoyed the presidency. Hopefully, I did a decent job for you guys. I can tell you that today, I feel that I'm a better councilman than I was on December 31st because of being the president of the council. And I hope that the future presidents that haven't done this before have the same feeling. Again, thank you for working with me. I enjoyed it a bunch. Natalie? Unmute. Oh, wait, Councilmember Brennan?
Motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion, second.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.